Good evening, I want to welcome you and call order this meeting of the Florisville ISD Board Trustees for this day on October the 2nd, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a quorum of board members present, myself, Joel Odom, Ms. Diana Martinez, Mr. Jason Savoda, Ms. Bana Reed, Mr. Steven Shadrock, Mr. Marshall Clear, and Mr. Craig Moots. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. I will now lead us in prayer if you'll stand, followed by Mr. Clear leading us in the pledges. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the day that you've given us to enjoy and to worship you. We thank you, Lord, for all your blessings. We thank you, Lord, for our students here at FISD, and, Father, for the teachers and staff that work so closely with them. Father, we pray your blessings upon them tonight, and bless their families as well. Father, we pray blessings upon our administration. We thank you for the leadership they provide for us in each of the schools, and, of course, here, our superintendent and others, Lord, that do such a wonderful job in leading our district. Father, thank you for all your blessings, and we ask you to bless this community, and bless us tonight. Give us wisdom and guidance. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Ms. Reed will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
The vision statement is character, knowledge, and confidence. Our mission statement is, "FISD is committed to the development of innovation, lifelong learners with positive character traits to achieve personal and professional success."
Mr. Shadrock will now recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service, and community engagement, and strategic resource management.
We will now do a round robin as we recite the FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, "In FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment."
Families are welcomed, partners, and their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, aptible individuals who are student-centered.
Captain's leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership in transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
All right, now we will turn to Ms. Martinez, who will now recite our overview of good governance. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Mr. Moots, who will do and recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month, we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interest of the district as a whole. This month for the code of ethics we are highlighting is integrity of character. I will refuse to surrender judgment to any individual or group at the expense of the district as a whole. I will consistently uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and governance procedures. I will not disclose information that is confidential by law or that will needlessly harm the district if disclosed. Our good governance indicator for the month is, "The Board of Superintendent team regularly checks expectations and assesses Board Superintendent manager operations."
Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
All right, now we have some recognitions for Florisville's ISD's Students and Teacher of the Month, Dr. Gilstrap.
Yes, first we want to call up from Florisville South Elementary, Dr. Schluter. Dr. Schluter out there? Right there. Oh, great. Dr. Schluter is going to announce a couple of students we want to recognize and a teacher from South Elementary.
All right. Evening, Board, Superintendent of Schools, Board of Trustees. I'd like to call Lane Clear, Tilly, and Quinn Garcia.
Come on up. Come on up.
Stand right here. All right, I'd like to present our Students of the Month for the Month of October from Florisville South. Our first Student of the Month is Lane Clear, the son of Lynette and Marshall Clear. Lane is very involved in school and outside of school. Lane is very involved in academics and currently has perfect attendance, maintains high grades, and leads the Hype Riders Writing Club after school on Fridays until 4:30. Lane is also very involved in extracurricular activities. He plays Wildcat football, baseball with the Florisville Little League, Spurs League basketball, jujitsu through the Ultimate Submission Academy. In school, Lane likes to be helpful and learn new things. Lane is a very friendly student and tries to make everybody feel included. He is a hard worker and puts forth best effort all of the time. With his family, Lane enjoys hunting deer, freshwater fishing, and tent camping. Lane is learning auto mechanics from his father and helps his dad work on their family vehicles. For what I proudly present to you, Lane Clear. Our second Student of the Month is Otilia Silva, the daughter of Freddie Silva and almost doctor Barbara Griego. Her friends call her Tilly. Tilly is very involved in school and an excellent student with near-perfect attendance and high As and Bs. Tilly is involved in many extracurricular activities. Tilly is a soccer player with Flo Town Kicks and loves playing soccer because that is her thing. She is a Girl Scout with Troop 559 and very involved with Girl Scouts and community. She is a junior Catholic daughter, which is affiliated with the Sacred Heart Church. In addition to this, she loves art, she loves drawing, coloring, and painting, and she was the alkylic for the 2021 Florisville Peanut Court. She has the quirkiest, funniest personality and very kind-hearted. She cannot stand to see somebody crying or hurting. She is one of those ones that tells her mom dad jokes and then laughs forever sometimes by herself. Unless Aunt Myanna is around, then the two of them seem to have the same witty personality. She does have a joke she has asked me to share with you. So what did one stoplight say to the other? "Don't look at me, I'm changing." She is excited for the multicultural club to get started again and is a stellar student in our dual-language program. For what I proudly present to you, Tilly Silva. And our October Teacher of the Month, serving Florisville South Elementary as her second year, is Ms. Quinn Garcia. She is celebrating her 18th year in education and has taught pre-K through second grade, and also has her ESL certification. Ms. Garcia says kids are fun and there is never a dull day. She especially enjoys working here in Florisville because you really get to build relationships with kids. As a teacher, you can go support them at football games, baseball games, and even spot them at the Florisville HEV. Ms. Garcia says watching her students is like watching her own daughter Corinne take her first steps. She gets to watch her kids do something for the first time and it emulates pride. It's the community that draws her here, and it's the community that makes her want to stay. Her coworkers report she has a passion in the way that she advocates for all students. She is a natural leader on campus and radiates positivity with her team members and has taken on the role of instructional facilitator of her team with great enthusiasm. In the afternoons, Ms. Garcia can be found at cone duty conversing and connecting with all students as she loads them into her vehicle. She motivates her students to take ownership in their learning by setting and reaching their reading goals, and then tracking their success, and celebrating and recognizing their growth. She can also be seen every Friday night at our football games cheering in the bleachers and in softball fields on Tuesday and Friday nights as her husband is coaching our Florisville Tigers football and softball teams at the Florisville High School. For what I proudly present to you, Ms. Quinn Garcia.
We do have, this is a little different this month because we do have our Early Childhood Center. We don't have our Students of the Month. We have three- and four-year-olds, so they're, I don't know if they come up here or do well. But I do want to have Ms. Diana Wagner come up and introduce our Teacher of the Month from the Early Childhood Center. So if y'all would just stay there, and then we'll recognize all of them.
Okay. Well, thank you. Ms. Solis, come on up. I want you to come up here and talk about you.
Come on up.
Board of Trustees and Dr. Gilstrap, honored guests, first of all, thank you for allowing me to present my very first Teacher of the Month of Florisville ISD. I do it with great pride. I didn't know the exact criteria, but I did definitely know who I wanted to choose as soon as this was brought to my attention. I met Ms. Solis back in May when I visited Florisville North and Florisville South before coming here, and Ms. Solis was just as kind as she was then as she is today. I've had the opportunity to work with her, and she was presented with a few challenges this year regarding switching from her bilingual classroom, which she got at the beginning of the year, and was told from one day to the next, "You won't be teaching bilingual, you'll be teaching regular monolingual." Most people would have a meltdown. I know I probably would. I went to her, and her biggest concern was, "But what about my kids? My kids?" It wasn't about what she was going to have to do or change or redo. There was a legitimate concern about losing her students, even though they were just going right next door. I cried with her, I laughed with her, I reassured her that it would be okay and we would get through it together and we'd call the parents together. But Ms. Solis never pushed back. What can I do? How can I make sure they're successful? How can I make sure the parents are comfortable? And it's the same energy she's brought since I've met her. It's kindness, it's loving. I love you, you know that. She hugs me every morning. We huddle every morning in the horseshoe. I get to meet with my team downstairs, 7 o'clock in the morning, and she hugs me and thanks me for being here with her and the team. With that being said, I'm very, very honored and very proud to present Ms. Sandra Solis with my first, as a principal, presenting to you. Thank you for all that you do. I love that I get an opportunity to work with you, but most importantly, that you get to work with these babies at our school. So I present to you Ms. Sandra Solis. Ms. Solis, we really appreciate your dedication and the determination that you have to ensure that your students are successful. Students at this age need a lot of love and support, and we're so happy that we know that you're providing that for them. Thank you for everything that you do, we really appreciate you. Congratulations. Thank you. Lane. Lane, the fact that you're friendly, you're already showing leadership skills at this age, being in the Hype Riders Club, with the sports that you're playing, it takes a lot of discipline, it takes a lot of dedication doing that, and being able to maintain your grades at the same time says a lot about you. You're already showing that character and confidence that we are looking for in our students, and we can't wait to see the other great things that you're going to continue to do. Congratulations, Lane, on this well-deserved recognition. Mrs. Garcia, we love that you're here. The fact that you put so much importance in building relationships with students says a lot about you, and we're so happy that you recognize the ability to do that by going out to the games and connecting with community and your students and their families. We really appreciate that. We thank you for everything that you do, and, you know, we look forward to seeing you also. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. (Applause) Otilia, very proud of you. You've got a lot of, I can't remember. (Laughter)
I tell you, you're very kind, you're sweet. I got to know you a little bit just dealing with Diego at the peanut festival this year. It also shows a lot about you, you know, playing your soccer, doing your dual-language, keeping your grades up, doing the Girl Scouts. I know, we always get hounded for cookies, so we appreciate it, and we're really proud of you, so thank you.
(Applause)
Right there. Actually, we'll put you over there by your dad.
Yeah.
Come on. Y'all as well.
Is that better? Perfect. All right. One, two, three. Okay, one more. One, two.
All right, parents, y'all, go ahead. Come on up.
Spouses too, Coach, come on. (Laughter) (Laughter) Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. I love Sir Howery. Thank you. Thank you.
We will also have a Community of Character Award presented by Dr. Schluter.
Ms. Brown, will you please come stand next to me? So on Monday, September 18th, it was the week of homecoming, and most of us were dressed like superheroes. However, at South, we had a real-life superhero. One of our instructional aides, who was asked to remain anonymous, was choking on her food in the lunchroom. Ms. Brown, who had just removed her cape so that she could eat, quickly sprang into action and performed the Heimlich maneuver. The individual whose life was saved that day tells me, "Dr. Schluter, I believe we have angels working in our school." She says she should have died that day and is now living on overtime, and stops by Ms. Brown's room each morning to thank her for saving her life and allowing her to live one more day. It's moments like this that bring us together and allow us to pause and reflect on how blessed we are to live another day. Ms. Brown, because of your bravery and your fast actions, our coworker is still here today. Thank you for being a real-life superhero and an angel on our South campus. I present to you the Community of Character Award. And a cool backpack. (Laughter) (Applause)
Ms. Brown, a quick word from us, board, and myself. You know, there's a lot of people that do a lot of training, a lot of this kind of stuff, so some people know it, some people don't, but I think not only just stepping into that spotlight, jumping in there and not worrying about anybody else, just getting things done, says so much about you, but also what you showed everybody around you. Get in there, get it done, save a life or whatever you got to do, it just shows not only your character, but the people around you, what we all need to do as students, faculty, everybody, you know? And I think everybody feeds off of what everybody else does, but especially when you jumped into action and did what you did and saved her life, it shows a lot about yourself and others around you looking up to you. So we thank you so much for doing what you do and being such an inspiration. Thank you. Just as a superintendent, that's the characteristics we're looking for. Not just from our staff, but our students, our community, and that's why it's called the Community of Character, because that's what you truly show. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
(Applause)
Can you get off that easy?
(Laughter) One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
All right, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very brave.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's very brave.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. I love Sir Howery. Thank you. 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 valedictorian from last year, Madison Jordan, also, you guys must skip this way, also received that award. So we are very honored of their hard work. This is the true reflection on both sides to their parents, the families that they come from, the hard work ethic, and we're very pleased that they're in Florisville. So.
Giving a national recognition. College Board National is, it's a tough accomplishment. It is something to be proud of. And again, it's a national recognition, not a state or local, so.
Great job.
I'm sorry, I need to steer your thunder.
I tell you, your academic accomplishments are just incredible, students. We are so proud of you. You have worked hard for this. And again, this is not something that you just give out to anybody, right? It's a national recognition. And we're so proud of you. We're so proud that you're part of the FISD family. And some of you, who is already graduated?
She's not here tonight.
Okay, sure, okay. Very good. Well, you guys have done such a wonderful job, and we're so grateful for you. And listen, you were smarter than I was. And which doesn't take much. But anyway, we're grateful for you, and you've done a great job, and congratulations. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Ready? One, two. One more. One, two. All right, so I think you'll come on up. Take one back here. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, unless y'all want to stay for the excitement for the rest of the meeting, you can, but if not, you're free to leave. Thank you for coming.
You almost had it.
I was gonna say.
Almost, just like, oh! What'd you say? She's all mad at me.
She is mad at me.
She didn't say, I can't, like, she didn't want to. She was just probably like, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna fix it.
Mama, I'm gonna fix it.
Yes, sir.
I know, I know. I remember you.
Yeah. I never got to go to the gym.
Yeah. I didn't make it.
Absolutely.
I was on my way to follow some of the other streets.
I need an education. It's like, oh, see you.
Coach.
See you.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna fix it. I'm gonna fix it. Mama, I'm gonna fix it.
I know, I know. I remember you.
Yeah. I never got to go to the gym.
Yeah, I didn't make it.
My goal is, I'm on my way. I'm on my way. I'm on my way.
I'm very proud of you. 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 Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Very good. Good job. 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 All right, unless y'all want to stay for the excitement for the rest of the meeting, you can, but if not, you're free to leave. Thank you for coming.
You almost had it.
I was gonna say.
Almost, just like, oh! What'd you say? She's all mad at me.
She is mad at me.
She didn't say, I can't, like, she didn't want to. She was just probably like, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm gonna fix it. I'm gonna fix it. Mama, I'm gonna fix it. 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 I'm sorry. 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 Hey, I don't get it. I sit up very proud of you. I'm sorry. 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 Nothing like us. She's a smart kid. All right. Stay far. I'm holding. Oh. All right. We will now move on to reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap will start us off with the superintendent report.
Board members, we recently notified Tyler Billings as qualified for Nationals once again in our tractor restoration based on the Chevron Tractor Restoration Competition. So he will be traveling to Indianapolis like he did last year for that contest in November. Actually, it is an item included in the consent agenda because it is out-of-state travel. But we do want to congratulate Tyler. Second year in a row. Last year, he was reserve grand champion, and so he's really looking forward to stepping up to the next lot. So congratulations to Tyler as he goes to Nationals, and we will recognize him at a future board meeting. Just finding out, and then a trip coming up in November, it was just really bad timing. So we'll get him in a future meeting. So I have had a few board members express interest in starting a random drug testing program for students. So the administration has been researching this information and options to implement such a program. It will require a board policy change, an update, as well as the development of procedures to include in the student handbook and athletic handbooks. Public meetings may be utilized to get a feedback regarding the procedures and the details of the program as we implement it. We will also provide an update to the board later on this year. I just wanted to inform the board that this has been brought up, so please feel free to let me know if you have any thoughts or concerns about this during this time of development, and if we want to consider putting that place in, in a drug testing program into action. So we do have, tonight, we have our financial audit on the agenda. Next month, we will have our first rating report, which is required to be a part of the board meeting. So we will have a publication coming out in the newspaper this next month because we do have to give a public notice about that. But just a reminder, we did score a perfect score on that first rating report this year, so we're looking forward to that. But it'll be officially given at the next month's board meeting in November. Just a reminder, a couple of upcoming things. We will have our Veterans Day program. Because the 11th falls on a Saturday, we'll have that recognition ceremony on Friday, November the 10th at 9:00 there at the high school. The ceremony will be coordinated by the junior ROTC, as well as the student council from the high school. It is open to the community, and we will have a special recognition, and we really want to invite all of our veterans in our community, as well as board members who are invited as well to attend that. It's really been a great ceremony since I've been here and being a part of two different veteran programs. It's something that we really take a lot of pride in in our community, and so it's always fun to see that and celebrate our veterans.
Are they gonna have a little thing like they had last year where they had cookies and drinks?
Reception? Yes, we'll have a reception. Truck or Treat for North Elementary, that's always well-attended. That's a big one. So September, or excuse me, Thursday, October the 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00. The board will have a spot to participate, so please let me or Alyssa know if you will be able to attend. They've requested some donations of candy and treats. Last year, the supply ran a little thin because they had a bigger crowd than expected, so we want to help them out, and so it's not on the burden for that campus to bring that. So they are accepting some donations for candy and things to pass out. Finally, as a reminder, the regular meeting for November has been pushed back to Monday, November the 13th due to the election. This will allow board members to be sworn in, as well as completing any annual tasks. So that is not the first Monday in November, it'll be the second Monday in November. So I wanted to make sure the public knew that. I've also included in the superintendent report some of our enrollment and attendance data as of Friday, this past Friday. Total enrollment, 4,074. That is about 10 more than what we were year-to-date last year. And our attendance rate is year-to-date. So from the first day of school to Friday, our average daily attendance was 93.4. So it is on the upswing. We've had a couple of weeks where we had illness going around across the campuses, and so we're getting over that, and our average daily attendance is now on the rise. Also included some other updates in there, and some dates of upcoming events, so please feel free to contact me if you have any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. I will now report on the continuing education hours for the Board of Trustees. Under State Board of Education rules, completing the required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. Per policy BBD legal, as Board President, I am required to announce the name of each member who has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, or is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. I, Joel Odom, have exceeded the required continuing education training. Mrs. Lyanna Martinez has exceeded the required continuing education training. Ms. Bonner Reed has exceeded the required continuing education training. Mr. Jason Devota has exceeded the required continuing education training. Mr. Steven Shawrock has exceeded the required continuing education training. Mr. Marshall Pleer has completed the required continuing education training. Mr. Craig Moots has completed the required continuing education training. As Board President, I'm very proud of our board and for all the work that they do, and for continuing the education that we have, we are required to do every year. This is the first time in a long time that every board member has either exceeded or completed the continuing education hours, and I'm very proud to serve you all. God bless you. Thank you. Dr. Wade will now give an update on HB3 goals.
Good evening, President Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, Board members. Tonight, we'll give you a brief report on the status of House Bill 3 goals. House Bill 3, from the 2019 legislative study, required boards to adopt five-year goals for early childhood and college for military readiness, otherwise known as CCMR. The board adopted these goals in March of 2020, right before we had a little event called COVID. Since that time, we've had changes in the accountability system, which I shared last month, and the STAR testing system, which has been shared also, that have affected those calculations. We're excited that we're only in the, we're in the fourth year of this, so next year, we'll be coming to you with new goals unless something changes with the legislature, which is always likely. So first of all, the early childhood goals are for third grade only, third grade reading and third grade math. These goals are based solely on STAR scores, which the board received in an in-depth report about assessment last month, so I'll keep this very brief. For the third grade, this is a meets-level performance, and our target for 2023 in this four-year of the five-year cycle was 48%. We did not meet that goal. We did meet the goal last year with 49%, but we did drop to 36%. And as you remember, third grade reading and math was the area where we saw some declines across the board in the district. The state also had a decline of 1%. I've listed for you there some of the plans that are put in place to help us meet that goal next year. Third, oh, I don't know which way I'm going, but there we go. Third grade math, the goal was 52%. We did not meet that goal. However, we did improve by three percentage points to 31%, and the state of Texas improved by two percentage points. So we're on track in terms of improvement with the state, even though we did not meet that goal. Also underneath there is a list of all the actions, which were enumerated last month also, with us trying to work on third grade. Next, we have our college career military board goals, and Mrs. Amy Graber, our new secondary coordinator of teaching and learning, who's been with us for about six weeks, is going to share about the CCMR goals.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, members of the board. I'm real quick going over some of the CCMR data as Dr. Wade mentioned. Just some ideas on how we can either be college-ready or career-ready. College-ready is just those TSI, the dual credits, AP and associate's degree. It's that simple. That's how we get those points. For career-ready, it's those IVCs, and then our students with IEPs, if they have that, if they're workforce-ready, or if they get that advanced degree plan, which usually means Algebra II. So that makes those college-ready points. This year, they are starting the military-ready, so we have to work with recruiters to make sure that we get those DV forums and all that enroll, so we can get those points for our military students. So some of the updates is CCMR for the high school is now 40%. Of the STARS, 40. CCMR, their CCMR points are 40, and then the dropout rate is 20. That kind of builds our high school. So some of the updaters to the indicators are those IVCs that our students can earn, which is industry-based certifications. Those options have changed. What the state says is workforce changes every two years, so our IVC list is going to be updated for our community. So our regions change. And so that is one thing that we, as the high school, are working together to make sure that we are staying current and updated in what we offer for IVCs at this point. And so, but they do offer some multiple ways, college or career, so it's just not based, like, you can only go to college or only go to career. So they are offering those multiple opportunities to show that ready status. Some of our board goals, I know our goal for the board at this point was 74%. We are projected to score right around 57, and how we get that number is we look at our number of points that we have, and we divide that by the number of graduates. And so currently, we're sitting projected at 57. Of course, unless the accountability does change, then that number will change. Now, one thing that the state did kind of do right at the end of last year, January, they changed our target. So before, 60% was the goal for an A, and now we have to score an 88% for that A. So the state kind of moved that line for us to hit as well. And so how do we get college-ready, and what some of our strategies that we are working for it, is we are intentionally trying to recruit for those TSI opportunities, SAT and ACT, really kind of looking at which students are ready and give them those opportunities. Create a live tracker for our cohort, so that a way everyone's on board and everyone sees the information, and that we're all communicating across the board. Some of the things, a summer TSI prep for any student to include those incoming freshmen. As we saw tonight, some of our fabulous students, they started that in the ninth and 10th grade, so we want to offer that boot camp and those preps for those incoming freshmen, and that's one of our things, is to recruit early. We want to have a school day SAT. Ms. Ackley has done a great job. She's coordinating a SAT for all 11th graders, and whatever 12th graders have not taken at this point, we are recruiting those, and that is going to be on March 26th as of right now. Hopefully, everything stays as planned. We are also having a dual-credit night on October 17th to recruit more parents, recruit, give the information out, and just be as transparent as possible. Another way that our strategy for those college points is a career fair, I'm sorry, a college fair, to grab that interest. We want students to know what they want to do. Even if they're like my 27-year-old and still has no idea what he wants to do, it at least gives them opportunities to see what they want. So what are some of our strategies for career-ready? Well, we have some program visits with other school districts. What are some ideas that they have? What can we include? What can we incorporate, especially in that workforce with it ever-changing? It's always to look and see what's working, what's not working, what bumps did you get through, so we're going to be working on that. Again, having that live tracker that incorporates everything and not just one thing at a time. We also want to look at early completion of a course catalog, so we can market that program to study and market what we have available to our families to ask questions, to see what else we can fill in. And we want to collaborate with our special education department to align our PMS coding, to making sure that we have everything up to date. And then Alamo Academies opportunities, that's a great opportunity for some kiddos, and so we just want to get that out there, publish it, and market it for kiddos and our families. Some of our strategies for military readiness, I know Dr. Parnsworth added this in his newsletter for the week, but we, advertising, the recruiters, the ASVAB, having the recruiters come in and talk to our kiddos once they take that ASVAB, what it means. Where do they fall at? What are they interested in? And so really just kind of seeing what the best fits for those kiddos with those recruiters. So we're also offering tests on ASVAB two times a year, so Ms. Ackley has done a great job coordinating that with our ranches as well. And so it kind of falls into our advanced academics right after that. When we're looking at dual credit, as you know, our dual-credit MOU is with Coastal Bend College. And so last year, it looks like we have earned 475 college credits for 2223 school year. So that's phenomenal. We are down about 14 courses, but if you look up the number of students, they are also down per semester. So our kiddos are about average, so it's just recruiting that, so we're on very intentional recruiting as well. Our, oops, our Alamo Academies. We did have two students last year earn a Level 1 certificate from St. Phillips College, Aircraft Turbine Mechanic and Information Technology and Security Academy. So those were also opportunities for our kiddos to earn.
How do we get that number up? To go from 11, 12, 10 down to 2?
So the way we have to get that number up is really recruiting because the bus leaves like at 6:00 in the morning, and it's just that commitment to get there super early to, to transport over there. Right now, that's the biggest gap that we've seen, is that early morning commute to the college and that commitment.
Big commitment.
Yes, sir, it is.
Do we have some kids commit this year?
We have some rosters, and Ms. Ackley did have a bunch of numbers on her rosters for each program study, because I believe we offer five, but where we're at in the process, I could not.
We have three.
Three so far this year? Are you active this year? Four, we have four.
Four.
And we're still recruiting.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. Our AP is down a little bit. I know it shows zero in this, I'm just recording the data. I don't guess, but we had six kiddos take those APs. I do know that we are pushing more dual-credit than we are the AP, so those are good opportunities for our kiddos. I know the colleges are working to really align to where when they take the credits, they will transfer. And here's kind of just a summary of the dual-credit in the Alamo Academies and those points that we've earned for the 2223 school year.
I know whenever I talked to the student groups the other day, the superintendent council, I asked those kids, you know, I asked the freshmen, are you even aware of this? One freshman said yes, had heard about it. I asked them how, where, why, and they had a relative that was involved in it, and the counselors, you know, they agree with that. But then whenever you go talk to the sophores and juniors, our counselors have talked to them about it, so they were more aware of it. Of course, you don't start that program until later on in high school.
It's the junior year.
I think we'd have to do a little more educating, and it is a big commitment.
Yeah. But it's a great opportunity for them.
It is.
Absolutely.[1556.88]
One freshman said, yes, get heard about it. I asked them how, where, why, and they had a relative that was involved in it, and the counselors said, you know, they remember that. But then whenever you go talk to the sophomores and juniors, our counselors have talked to them about it, so they were more aware of it. Of course, you don't start that program until later on in high school.
It's the junior year.
I think we'd have to do a little more educating, and it is a big commitment.
Yeah. But it's a great opportunity for them.
It is.
Absolutely.
Tremendous opportunity.
Like diesel mechanics.
Sure.
Yes, sir. It's a great opportunity, but it's a commitment, and they cannot start until the junior year.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Wade will now give a report of the bilingual reception.
Okay, so local education agencies are required to provide certified bilingual teachers and English as a second language endorsed teachers for emergent bilingual students. And if we are not able to do that, then we have to request an exception or waiver. As I put in your Board brief last week, we are able to have a certified bilingual teacher in all of our dual-language classrooms. The high school has been able to come up with a creative solution for those emergent bilinguals by creating a specific, a specific English class for English as a, learn, English second language learners. However, we may have a need to do a waiver for the pre-K campus, for the early childhood campus. So Ms. Wagner has been out, and so we're going to meet with her just to make sure if we can come up with a solution, but I needed to let the Board know that there is a possibility that we will have to apply for a waiver, which is due November the first. So you guys aren't going to meet before then, so I needed to notify you. One of our requirements, if we have to apply for a waiver, is to set aside ten percent of our bilingual alumni for professional development. We have hired a bilingual specialist and program facilitator, who part of his responsibilities, about sixty percent of his time, is to do professional development and coaching with teachers. So we have met the ten percent plus for that professional development. So if this is just a notification, are there any questions about that? Last year, we did have to apply for a waiver, so I'm excited about the possibility of not. I just wanted to let you know, just in case. Great, thank you.
Next on the agenda is item number five, action items. First action item is the consent agenda.
Board members, typical consent agenda, with the exception of the out-of-state travel, as I talked about earlier, Tyler Billings will be traveling to Indianapolis, Indiana to participate in the Chevron National Tractor Restoration Show. So other than that, it's typical consent agenda, and administration recommends the Board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'm going to accept the administration's recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Moots accepts the administration's recommendation. And Ms. Reed, a second. Any further questions? Cal and Biggins accepted the consent agenda, they've been to raise your hand. Seven, zero, please. The next action item is to consider approval of the District twenty-two, twenty-three financial audit presented by Ms. Abel.
Good evening, Dr. Gilstrap, Dr. Odom, and Board of Trustees. This evening, I have Derek Walker here with me to walk you through the audit, the highlights from this past year, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. It must be approved by the Board by November twenty-seventh, so I will turn to Ms. Reed.
I sure wish we just wanted someone to just present it for me. Good evening. Tried to bring some of this ring with me, but it didn't come, it didn't come this way. So anyway, thank you for having me tonight. As mentioned, I'm here to present the June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three audit. Talked and report cards that District in our regards received and they did a great job during the year. And just keeping, I'm going to keep this kind of short and sweet, if that's okay with y'all, and go over our opinion letters, and then also some fund balance numbers, and then some budget numbers, if that's okay with y'all. So do y'all have your audit report, or do y'all have it online, or? Perfect. So on page four and six, this is our opinion letter. We have three different opinion letters in here. One's on your basic financial statements and whether they present fairly in all material respects the operations of the District during the year. This, in our opinion, on page four, if you look, I think it's got a title, can't get mine to switch. We believe that the District's financial, operations of the District do present fairly in all material respects the operations of the District as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is also known as a clean or an unmodified opinion, and this is the highest level of assurance that an auditor can give on set of financial statements. So congrats to the District in that regard. There are two other opinion letters in the back, so if a District receives federal funds, it's supposed to have an audit on its internal controls, compliance, and other matters. That was also a clean or unmodified opinion. And then lastly, if a District receives over seven hundred and fifty thousand federal funds, it's supposed to have an audit on its major federal programs. This was also a clean or unmodified opinion. So congrats to the District in that regard. So going over a couple of numbers real quick, if you'll switch over to page seventeen. Sorry, page eighteen. So this financial statement is how you see your budget every, every month, or how y'all make budget amendments, et cetera. This is considered a profit and loss or an income statement for us business owners. Just presents the operations of the District, and it shows what your total revenues were for the year, your total expenses, the change, revenues less your expenses, and your ending fund balance. So I'm just going to go over that first column real quick. This is your general fund. This is your major fund. This is where pretty much all your property tax money comes into, state funding, et cetera, and this is where the majority of your expenses are paid out of. Four lines from the top, you can see total revenues were just under thirty-eight million dollars. Going down three-quarters of the way, total expenditures were, was thirty-seven point six million. And then the change in fund balance was actually an increase this year, four hundred and thirty thousand. Y'all see that? So this left y'all with an ending fund balance in your general fund of eleven point eight million dollars. So it's good to see, we like to see an increase in fund balance. It's a good indicator that the District's living within its means, putting a little weight, but it's also too, if it does decrease one year, that's not a big deal. It's just kind of like having a savings account, you know what I mean? You know, you wait and buy the newspaper for your wife, or, you know, whatever it may be, so.
Speaking of that.
Yeah.
We have some money aside for your earmarked for buses, two hundred and, is that?
Two hundred and twenty.
Is that included in that number?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So yes, two hundred and twenty, it's on another page, so there is that earmarked, it's just that, that was on the fourth amendment.
Yes, sir. So that's included in that four, four thirty number.
It's included in the eleven point eight million.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Your next fund is your debt service fund. Of course, this is the fund that's used to collect your property tax money and service your debt payments. Total revenues were five point five million. Total expenses were roughly about five million. This showed an increase in fund balance of one million. Is that right? Yep. So total expenses were four point five, I was doing that math in my head. So total fund balance from your debt service fund increased one million dollars, leaving that with an ending fund balance of six million, one sixty-eight, six six nine. So just for presentation purposes, we have that third column, that's your other funds. This includes your child nutrition program, your Title I, and it includes your campus activity funds. We lump them all in that one category. If you ever do want to see the detail, there is a schedule in the back if you'd like to look. But looking at all those total other funds, total revenue was nine point seven million, total expenses were nine point four million, increase in fund balance at three hundred and twenty-four thousand, leaving those funds with just shy of the two million dollar fund balance. So across the board, far right column, total fund balance went up one point, one million seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, leaving the District with an ending fund balance right at twenty million dollars. In comparison with other districts of your size, that's, that's a good, healthy, you know, fund balance, so. Last schedule I want to go over is your budgetary comparison schedule. This is on page fifty-six. The very first column is your original budget. That's usually done right before the start of the new year, this in June of two thousand and twenty-two. And then during the, during the year, you'll have those budget amendments. That second column represents an amended budget. Third column is your actual amounts, and fourth column is your variance between your actual amounts and your amended budget. So looking at total revenues again, total revenues came in, I'm looking at the far right column, four hundred and seventy-six thousand more than what was anticipated. Total expenditures came in fifty-six thousand more than what was anticipated. There were two budget over expenditures in your general fund. One was a result of a new accounting standard that we had to implement, and that, that was in the regards of operating leases, and there was a building, right? There was a building that we had to record as an expense this year, and that threw y'all over in that function fifty-one, that hundred and one thousand dollars.
Was it the portable building that's in your?
Yes, it's the portable buildings. It's the right, right to use though.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just the way you have to account for it.
Yeah, so y'all are normally used to do it on cash-in, cash basis, and this is just one of those oddities that kind of happen, so. I just want to mention that because when they do that TA closing letter, that, that will be in there, so. So I can keep on going, but I was going to call it quits with that one. And I've never had anyone argue with me on that, so. But overall, it was a great audit. Thanks to your administration staff getting ready with us. It's, it's a long, drawn-out process, and it's, you know, an audit's an intrusion, you know? They're happy to see us, but they're really happy to see us go.
And it's great when they do it online.
Okay, that's all I have. Our numbers are on the top of our letters. If y'all ever do have any questions or concerns, thank y'all for responding to our surveys. We do like to track y'all down if y'all don't. It's just an opportunity for y'all to provide us, you know, anything we need to, anything we need to, you know, because all we're doing is talking to the administration, so we do appreciate y'all giving those in to us.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Any questions?
If there are no questions, administration recommends the Board approve the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three audit as presented by Coleman Horton.
I'm going to accept the administration's recommendation. A second. Okay. So a second, so any further questions? Okay, if there are none, you accept this report. I would be known by raising your hand. Seven, zero.
Thank you.
And the next action item is to consider approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four instructional materials committee presented by Dr. Wade.
Good evening again, Board. The Board is required to approve the membership of the District Instructional Materials Committee for any proclamation. Included in your packet are the names of staff members who have been nominated to serve on the committee for both science and some select CTE adoptions. The adoption for science is for kindergarten through twelfth grade, and so you will note that there are teachers on the committee from every campus. The CTE adoption only covers courses in our education and training program, health science, and STEM, which is mostly computer science. And that committee includes appropriate teachers from the high school. Also included in your packet is the timeline schedule for this adoption, which goes into effect for materials next school year. So we're a year, a year ahead of time, but the timeline includes the committee being invited to a resource fair at Region Twenty Education Service Center in San Antonio in January to preview potential resources. So that's part of the timeline. Are there any questions about the committee? Hearing none, administration recommends the Board approve the proclamation, two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, science and CTE instructional materials adoption committee membership as presented.
Motion to accept the administration. Mr. Shawrock with the motion, second. Mr. Clear, any further questions? If there are none, you accept the administration's recommendation. I would be known by raising your hand. Seven, zero.
Thank you.
You can, Dr. Wade. The Board will now convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero-seven-four, personnel at seven thirty-one PM. The voting will take place in the closed session, and the action the Board wishes to take as a result of discussions, the closed session will take place after the Board reconvenes All right, the Board will reconvene to open session at eight oh seven PM. We've now concluded our agenda for this meeting. Is there any further business? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at eight oh seven PM. Thank you.